Everyone, we're going to call the meeting to order. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this open public meeting was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, provided to the Nutley Township Clerk, tap into Nutley and district newspapers on June 11, 2025, and posted on the district website. Will everyone please stand for the flag salute? [inaudible]
Mr. Balsamo. Mrs. Dancheck Martin. Dr. Delia. Mr. Fraschinale.
Here.
Mr. Gilberti. Mr. Kaczynski.
Here.
Mrs. Quirk.
Here.
Mr. Scotty.
Here.
Mr. Farro.
Here. Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
I get a motion for approval of the meeting minutes?
Second.
Anyone opposed? In favor? Sorry, out of order, not my end. All right, we're going to move on to our presentations. Mr. Bania and Mrs. Lopez Sola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to invite the board and people on the stage to the seats so we can present
Thank you. Good evening, members of the community, Board of Education members and teachers. I know some teachers in the back. Thank you for coming tonight. This is our reporting of the 2024-25 spring cycle testing data that should be done each year by October 31st. It also includes on the tail end our HIB self-assessment data, which should also be done in the month of October. We combined both presentations for the public, and the presentation will be found on our website following this meeting. Any questions or concerns, you can reach out to our office so we could talk through some of the data sets. I would like to go, you can move forward. As part of our continuous improvement cycle, understanding our test data, both lagging and leading our internal data, as well as state performance by our students at the district level, is important to identify curriculum trends, scope and sequence trends, where our students excel and where our students may need some support. So this is a continuous process of looking at our assessments, reflecting on their progress, advising our curriculum, advising our instruction, and then repeating the cycle each year. Before we do that, I would like to take an opportunity to talk about some success we've had in the district opening our new Nutley Early Childhood Center. I took some pictures just this morning and put them on this slide, just to share with you a major facilities upgrade we've experienced in Nutley Public Schools. I want to take the opportunity to thank both our board and the Board of Commissioners for their support in providing a very suitable learning space for our youngest learners. I couldn't help when I got out of my car, because we park across the street, take the picture on the left to encompass kind of the front of the building, both the front entrance and the building behind it, which goes up three stories. From the parking lot, you can see the fence where the playground is behind in our three stories. The first two stories have 10 state-of-the-art classrooms for three- and four-year-olds, bathrooms that are available, therapy space, nursing space, and administrative space. The third floor, we are transitioning. Not only our administrative offices, but our special services and business office will follow on the third floor of this building. There's a small amount of parking in the front, which we block off when students come in and exit the building. We have a very nice preschool play area that's gross motor for their time. It's being used quite frequently, it's turfed. And then you see kind of where I stand usually, the entrance between where the students park and exit and kind of where they enter the main door. It's a very nice facility on the outside, and if you go to the next slide, you can see what it leads to on the inside. On the inside, we've created learning environments where kids are thriving. We have built areas where small group instruction takes place, structured play takes place, rest time takes place, choice time takes place. And it's pretty amazing to see on a daily basis the work our teachers, our teacher aides, our administration do with our students. And I bring this up because this is a data presentation, because we start looking at data in district from this very early age. Next slide, please. The state requires as part of preschool expansion for us to assess our students with a standard process in both fall and spring. These are our youngest learners coming in at three years old, three and four years old. We assess them in social, emotional, physical, language, cognitive, literacy, and mathematics at that age, age appropriate, of course. We're assessing them if they're below expectations, meeting expectations, or exceeding expectations. You would expect students who haven't been in school to come in below or meeting expectations. And what we're finding is our students are coming in in that variety, for the most part. When you move to the spring cycle data, you can move to the next slide. When we assess them in the spring, we see 30 percentage points of growth in each of the areas from below expectations to meeting or exceeding expectations. Our students' education begins in three and four years old. It's measurable, it's actionable, and we work hard to understand where our kids are. And this will improve our district K-12, given enough time, given enough students in here. So I applaud both boards, the community, for supporting the preschool initiative. I think as we continue to look at data sets coming in, and we continue to understand where our students are and where we move them to, this will enhance our K-2, 3, 5, our 6, 8, and our 9, 12 educational systems to be one K-12 educational system. Thank you. Traditionally, this is not part of the data presentation, it's not mandatory. I thought it was important to share with the community the work we're doing and how important that work is. Next slide, please. I think at this time, I want to turn over to Mrs. Lopez Sola, who's going to walk us through some of the beginning parts of the data received from the spring cycle.
Thank you, Mr. Bania. The New Jersey Student Learning Assessment assesses students in both ELA, math, and science in specific grade levels. Scores are reported in raw scores that are categorized into five performance levels that you'll see up on the screen. These performance levels provide a way to easily identify where students fall in the continuing of mastering grade-level content. Next slide, thank you. We're going to start with ELA data and then math data, starting at grade three. Just to kind of give you a overview of how these graphs are organized, and I apologize that some of the text is small, you'll see all the way to the left is the state data, it says NJ underneath. Next to it is the district data, it says Nutley, and then our five elementary schools. And you'll see what we call 100% stacked columns that have the percentage of students for that year, for that grouping, that scored level one, two, three, four, and five. So here, you'll see the district scored above the state average for students meeting and exceeding expectations in grade-three ELA. There was an increase in students exceeding expectations, but you can see a slight dip in those meeting and exceeding combined. This is still an area of growth for us, and we'll see it again in grade-three math. In grade four, you'll see the district scored above the state average for students meeting and exceeding expectations with an increase in meeting and exceeding expectations for the year. So those purple boxes show this year's data for New Jersey and then Nutley, so that kind of jumps out at you there. And you can see that blue and green combined is the meeting and exceeding expectation. So you can see it increasing from before the purple box and then increasing further inside that purple box. The other thing to note is the red on the bottom is decreasing. That's students not meeting expectations. So as we're getting more students to meet or exceed, that percentage of not meeting is also decreasing. Here, you'll see the district scored above the state average for students meeting or exceeding expectations, and a slight decrease from last year in meeting and exceeding grade-level standards here for grade-five ELA. We see this as an opportunity. Grade five is departmentalized. This is our third year in that, and we do have professional development time scheduled with these teachers to collaborate and to look at these results in more detail. While the grade-six state data was relatively consistent with the previous year, our sixth graders here in Nutley in ELA showed an increase in students meeting and exceeding expectations. So you'll see that blue and green combined, right, continues to increase. And look at how small that red is in that second purple box of Nutley from this past
I can speak to some of the secondary data sets. As you look at seventh-grade ELA, you see New Jersey on the left in the purple box and Nutley on the right. Over time, Nutley performed very consistent to the previous year, still above state averages. You do see a decrease in the one category, the scoring, the red shrinking over a period. Please keep in mind, when you're looking at data sets like this, you're looking at different students and a similar curriculum and program year after year. So there is a variable of student groups, cohorts, changing over time. Next slide, please. Grading eight English provides for us a similar picture. If you compare New Jersey with Nutley, Nutley is better on the average, meeting and exceeding expectations, green and blue, but very similar to the previous year. There is some slight growth in the both green and blue when compared to the previous Grade nine, so testing at the high school is grade-nine and grade-nine ELA and grade-nine math, whether that math be Algebra I, geometry, and there are no Algebra II students there. The state's transitioning to the New Jersey GPA as a graduation requirement, so students have one year of testing when they come into the high school currently. You'll see grade-nine English retract a little bit from the state, as well as from Nutley High School. You'll see our ones are much lower than the state, but consistent year over year.
We're going to switch gears and now move on to math. So you'll see the same performance levels at the bottom left-hand corner. And again, we're looking at the state on the left, the district, and then the five elementary schools. Here, you'll see the district scored above the state average for students meeting and exceeding expectations with a slight decrease in students meeting and exceeding expectations over the previous year. In grade four, you'll see the district scored above the state average for students meeting and exceeding expectations. And while you'll see a relatively consistent percentage of students meeting and exceeding grade-level expectations, you can see that decrease in students not meeting expectations, again, shown in the red. So even though if you're looking at just the blue and the green combined, we increased slightly, we did a great job of also decreasing that red, which is the students not meeting For grade-five math, here you'll see the district scored above the state average for meeting and exceeding, and increased the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations again this year. This may be in part due to the fifth-grade departmentalization now two years ago, allowing for more dedicated time for these content areas. Again, this year, we saw an increase in students meeting and exceeding grade-level expectations in grade-six math, and we continue to be well above the state average. We also saw a significant decrease in students not meeting expectations. So that red section is almost completely gone there if you look at the right-hand purple box of Nutley's performance this past spring.
Grade seven includes all the students except those that qualify for Algebra I in grade seven. That's typically anywhere between 10 and 25 students on a yearly basis. Those students are taken out and included in the Algebra I data that you'll see in a little bit. Grade-seven math looks to be very consistent with the state and slight regression in the meeting and exceeding from year, year over year. In grade-eight math, we have another side of the story. You see we far well exceed state averages in meeting and exceeding, and you see it growing from last year. Algebra I tells you data from different grade levels. So for Nutley High School, these would be students who take Algebra I in ninth grade. Some students take it in ninth grade, some students take it in 10th grade. You also have John Walker Middle School data set, and from that data set, you have some students who take it in seventh grade, and then another 75 or so students that take it in eighth grade. So now we're starting to assess math when they take math, as math is the first area to be tracked in most school districts. But you'll look at the data set, and you'll see Nutley is a little better than the state average, and John Walker Middle School, most of the students are blue or green, and they meet or exceed expectations. Geometry is another one that can be assessed either in middle school, as it's for those Algebra I students in the seventh grade move on to eighth grade and take geometry, or if they qualify in Algebra I and take geometry as freshman year. So all the testing is done during freshman year. You'll see that Nutley does much better in the state with geometry testing and does very well at John Walker Middle School. That's a group of eighth-grade students, anywhere from 10 to 25 students that take that geometry test. Algebra II, we show you this because there is no data. We don't, we do not have a large population taking it during ninth grade, so we don't have, I think you need 25 students to qualify for a representative data set. We don't score that on an annual basis. Did you want to talk about science? I'll be more than happy to talk about science. Science is a four-tiered system, a one, which is red, two, yellow, green is three, and four is blue. And you could see over time, this is in fifth grade, eighth grade, and later in 11th grade, they test for science. You can see Nutley has grown in science in fifth grade from 23, 24 to 24, 25, is better than average in the state. We still have a long way to go in our assessments for science. A lot of this work is aligning our curriculum to the tested materials on this exam. In eighth-grade science, you see very similar data sets to the previous year, slight regression in four scores, a slight increase in three scores, both averaging higher than the state in this manner. In grade 11, you see very similar data sets as the previous years, they look almost identical, 23, 24, 24, 25, as compared with the state averages for 11th grade. The state has moved to New Jersey GPA as the graduation requirement over time. You can see where the state is. It either falls into two categories, meeting expectations or not meeting expectations here, or ready or not ready, I believe they call it. So you have blue and yellow. You could see we fare better than the state. The yellow group of students will be given an opportunity in about a month to sit for this exam again, and we're expecting this data set to increase, as in most districts over time. A similar pattern for ELA. You see the data set, we fare very well in ELA when compared to the state. We did have a smaller percentage. Keep in mind, each year, the test cut scores change, the test evolves, and it changes as it goes from field test to being implemented. But these students, again, will have a chance to retest this fall to meet their graduation I did want to put, although not required, a slide in here on AP data. This is a celebration point for the district. As you can see, from 21 to 25 in the bar graph on the left, we have consistently improved the percentage of total AP students with scores three or better over time. That's 85% on the right, and Nutley High School is experienced, and Nutley Public Schools, because this is a K-12 approach, a continued, a successful story. Although they're not itemized here, I would like to point out AP Computer Science, which saw all students scoring a three or better on the AP exam, which is amazing. We have had much success in the amount of students taking a class, sitting for an exam, and being, being very, three or better, being, scoring well on that exam after. So this, along with doing enrollment, these are celebration points for the district.
Another data point to share is the WEDA Access 2.0 data. Access measures our English language learner's ability to understand and produce English used within school settings. There's four sections of the test, listening, reading, speaking, and writing. And just to note, the students within this group are always evolving, right? We're constantly admitting new students, students may be disenrolled, so we also compare the number of students tested, the number of students who scored 4.5 or above, and the percentage. So here, you can see in 2025, 143 students were tested, 25 scored 4.5 or above, and We share information on these assessments with parents and the community in a variety of ways. We want to partner in your child's learning, so you should be receiving your child's score reports by October 15th. Here's an example of the front page of that score report, and then I'll go into specifics of different sections on the next slide. So Section A, B, and C basically outline the student's name, the content and test title, and a code if you'd like to access an online report. Sections D, E, and F show information on performance levels. It also shows the average for school, state, and district. There's also performance by reporting category. So here, if you look in ELA, you can see specific reading and writing broken out, and then underneath it, you can see subclaim categories like literacy, I'm sorry, literary text, informational text, vocabulary, written expression. And there's a little arrow in a circle in blue next to each of those subcategories, giving parents an idea of whether or not their child met, was approaching, or did not meet the expectations for those specific subcategories. I'm sorry, can you go back one? Oh, maybe go forward, and then forward. Okay. Yeah, so these parent resources can be found on our website. I know it's a little difficult to see there, but under the District tab, and then scrolling down to the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, you can find a copy of this presentation and a parent's guide to understanding the NJSLA scores. Can you go back to that previous slide? Perfect, thank you. We also wanted to share some information for 25, 26 school year. The NJSLA is now becoming an adaptive assessment, which basically means that instead of just having a form assessment where you might be getting similar questions in a similar order to another student, as the student progresses, future questions are basically determined based on the responses to previous questions. This is very similar to our eye-ready diagnostic, which we already use in district, but the state is now transitioning to an adaptive assessment in place of the NJSLA. The N, I'm sorry, can you, yeah. Some of the highlights or the positive aspects of an adaptive test are that they can help reduce text anxiety. They're basically presenting students with questions that are closer to their instructional level, so they're more likely to be able to read the question, understand the material, and focus on the test. It also may lead to more accurate results. It's measuring each student's performance with greater precision, because as students answer a question correct or incorrect, it's finding that sweet spot of exactly where they are and asking them questions to really drill down and be more specific about where we can support them moving forward. It's important to note that the state is requiring a fall field test for the NJSLA adaptive version, and that window is October 27th through November 14th. Field test results will not be sent to parents, they're used internally to help further kind of the test design and give some inter, later, reliability as far as how the tests are being
In summary, these are our test scores in the Jersey Spring Testing Cycle. And reflecting, initial reflections, we share this with administrators, with teachers, we look at building and district evidence statements to identify curriculum standards that we are strong in or we are weak in, and we look to adapt instruction and curriculum to better that for our students. And at first glance, you would notice maybe grade-three, to look at ELA, you know what's going on there as students begin their testing cycle in grade-three. And then there's many points to celebrate, including grade-six, both math and ELA, or AP scores and other data sets. We're committed to reflecting on this data and working with our teams to better the experience for our students. I would like to shift the presentation to another mandatory reporting that we must present publicly. Go to the next slide, please. Our self-assessment data in grades of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights from July 1st to June 30th, last school year, you can go through. This is a pretty standard presentation. We look at each year, each building team looks at eight core elements with indicators. They self-assess and rate with a rubric, and they build a library of sample documentation backup. They rate zero to three in each of the indicators and core elements, and they maintain the documentation in-house. Next slide, please. The core elements, and I'll just go through them quickly, are HIB programs, our approaches, and other initiatives. Do we have established, implemented programs? Do we assess the program's fidelity, that type of thing? Core element two, training on the BOE-approved HIB policy and documents. This is training, that a new teacher orientation, continued training at faculty meetings. Do we discuss the HIB policy with not only faculty, but with the students? Core element three, other staff instruction and training programs. Do we talk about suicide prevention and other HIB prevention? Do school leaders receive information on how they can support anti-bullying in the schools? Next slide, please. Core element four, do we embed it in our curriculum and instruction on HIB-related matters, bullying? Do we have ongoing lessons spiraled? Do we monitor the week of respect in our buildings? Core element five, do we appoint an anti-bullying specialist? Do we meet with an anti-bullying specialist? Does the building-based anti-bullying specialist meet with our district liaison several times throughout the year? Core element six, our school-level HIB incident reporting procedure. Do we maintain a confidential and appropriate procedure in implementing HIBs? It's posted on our district website. Do we follow the reporting mechanisms as outlined in the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights? Core element seven, do we notify parents in a timely manner? Do we investigate them within 10 school days? Do we prepare a report in Hibster? Do we send that report to the superintendent, who then forwards that to the Board of Education within two school days of sending it to me? And do we have a reporting system in place for our staff members to move up the chain, both verbal and written, as well as for parents online to report bullying, and students online to report bullying? Core element eight, next slide, please. So we assess ourselves in all of those, Lincoln School, Rackless School, all of our schools. Each core element has a maximum that they can score themselves, and we get a max of 78 all the way to the right. We peak at 76, and our lowest score is at our high school at 63. We, we peak at seventy-six, and our lowest score is at our high school at sixty-three. We work with our high school team to identify the core elements that they feel need to be improved, and we work to improve them year after year. We share this information publicly, and we post this to our district website. That would be our self-assessment presentation to the community. Mr. President, would you like me to take questions here, comments here? Does anyone have any questions, comments, that they'd like to share publicly? Yes, sir. Yeah, so I can, there's, there's a multivariable system. So the first thing I would say is we are well into departmentalizing. First of all, I want to acknowledge that every year's data is a different set of students moving through our system. So this is one way to look at it. Another way would be tracking those students year after year in a cohort style, which I think is necessary to answer your question. But another way I would answer that is saying we've been pretty set in departmentalization in sixth grade for, I want to say, four or five years, right, Jeanine? Five years? I think it's a, it was a great move for our district. I think teachers in that system, this is coming from a secondary teacher, have multiple times to teach a lesson, multiple experiences even throughout the day, so they evolve quicker, they learn more, as everyone's always learning, and our students benefit from that. In fifth grade, we're starting to see data, starting to shift in this direction. Don't forget, in fifth grade, departmentalization is a new routine for our students. And anytime students change routine, you see data slow to catch up. The more they get in that routine, the more they routine that to sixth grade, the better sixth grade has in developing the routines and procedures for a departmentalized approach. There's a certain amount of independence that comes with that. There's a certain amount of student skills that come with that. So I think our students are better equipped to handle that. So I'm sorry, your second part of your question, sir, was? Yes, I would say when you go to ninth grade, you have two student transitions, the seventh grade to the middle school, and then to ninth grade of the high school. Every time you change, and they're very different environments, right? The, the middle school is a very structured, contained environment, while our high school is a very independent, rotating drop environment. Every time students change environment, I believe that the test scores, as students get used to those routines, shift. That's why I am in favor of a six, eight middle school. Students are in that routine longer, and I think as time goes on, we start mirroring our middle school and our high school, we have real potential to start moving those data sets. I also see, you see, I think you have a ramping up of curriculum as you move from sixth grade to seventh grade, to eighth grade, to ninth grade. And I do think you have maybe some test fatigue and other things playing a part as students move up through to ninth grade. I think at all levels, our teachers are very strong, and they're very adaptive to the students' needs as they come through. Sure. We do. We didn't have it for this presentation, but we do in district. We do share with our administrators and teachers. Sometimes we have in these presentations, we just haven't for this one. Sure. Don't be sorry. I don't have that data for you now, but I'd be interested to look at that data as well. Another very interesting data, when we have data, we have to disaggregate it to get it the way you want to look at it. And I, I would like to do that, because you bring up some good points. I, I do want to give a shout out to both our math department, who runs CompSci, Jen Lambert, and the teachers who do that. I mean, they do a wonderful job, and a lot of success is the hard work that they're putting in at that level, the grants we've received and the work they're doing. So that's, that's another place to celebrate in the district, I think. Thank you for your questions. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Sam? Yeah, I think the lessons of departmentalization has made a district look at, you know, would it be effective to move that down in grade levels? Would teachers support it? Would, would students benefit from it? And I think that's a, it's a very important conversation for the district to have, to your point. And the possibility of getting students in that routine earlier would benefit the district. Thank you so much. Yes, Dan? Absolutely. So we run consistent curriculum with consistent resources, consistent PD. It's all run centrally. We also are using iReady and some other diagnostic tools to test our students three times throughout the year. They're finishing, and I know there's been a lot of things at home about iReady and the move to this. It's an adaptive system, like Jeanine was speaking about with the, so we're preparing our students to take the test, but we're also using that internally, which will help us designate, it gives us a lot of information about where our students need help, where they are, and also how to shuffle our district resources. So when we look at a tiered intervention system to support students who might be on the end you're talking about, we can better understand where they're having trouble, what our classroom teachers can do to support them and make those changes. You know, each building may be a little different, to your point, but we can also redeploy district resources even mid-year to support those students that need that. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. We can go back up to the stage. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our superintendent report. Mr. Bania?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the board, staff, families, and community members. The 2025-26 school year began with a strong, fresh start. Our success in opening smoothly is due to the dedication, professionalism of our faculty, staff, and administrators, and also to the families of Nutley, who prepared their children and supported our schools in countless ways. And the combined effort of teachers welcoming students back to the classroom, staff ensuring that operations run seamlessly, and families partnering with us from day one has made this a positive and exciting return to school. One of the highlights of this fall, as mentioned, is the opening of the Nutley Early Childhood Center. This new state-of-the-art facility is now home to more than 100 of our youngest learners, three- and four-year-old children who are beginning their educational journeys with us. While the initial drop-off started with uncertainty and tears, mostly from the parents, we quickly transitioned to smiles, hugs, joy, discovery, and the energy of little voices. And we are thrilled to provide a nurturing and enriching environment for them. To celebrate our preschool community, we are inviting all of our early childhood students and a parent to join us at this Friday's football game. Families will be welcomed to a 5:30 tailgate before the game, and our preschoolers will serve as honorary captains for the coin toss. We look forward to celebrating them as part of our greater Nutley family. Across the district, our students are engaged both in and out of the classroom. Athletics are well underway, with our fall sports teams competing and showing great Raider pride. The music program is in full swing, with the Chamber Singers' performance at the 9/11 memorial service and our award-winning halftime band productions. Two weeks ago, Nutley High School hosted its annual club fair on the Oval. It was a tremendous success, with large numbers of students coming out to explore the many clubs and activities offered, connecting with peers and discovering ways to get involved. We have also had successful back-to-school nights at our elementary schools, the Early Childhood Center and Nutley High School. These evenings offered valuable opportunities for parents to meet teachers, learn more about classrooms, expectations, and strengthen their partnership with our schools. Our PTO meetings are drawing crowds like we haven't seen in some time. Tomorrow evening, we look forward to welcoming middle school families for their back-to-school night, which will round out a strong start to the year in terms of parent engagement. I would like to recognize the outstanding achievements of two of our seniors, Josh Park and Arlen Senari, who have both been named National Merit Scholars. This is an incredible academic honor and a reflection of their talent, discipline, and commitment to excellence. We are also grateful to Samantha Ryan, a Nutley High School alumna, who reported to speak with our students, who returned to speak with our students during National Suicide Prevention Month. Her willingness to share her personal story and honor her sister's memory was moving and impactful. Her message of resilience and hope left a strong impression on our students and staff, and we thank her for the courage and generosity in giving back to the Nutley community. This evening's board agenda includes several resolutions worth highlighting. In Finance Resolution Six, we are accepting several generous donations, a much-needed stove for our field house from Mrs. Rosero, a new sign for Yanacaw School from the Yanacaw PTO, and funding for a wellness area donated by Samantha Ryan. These gifts reflect the commitment of individuals and groups in our community who continue to support and strengthen our schools. In addition, the district will be entering into a shared service agreement with the Nutley Family Service Bureau, which will provide an in-house crisis counselor located at Nutley High School. This counselor will be available not only to our high school students, but as a resource to all schools across the district, furthering our commitment to mental health and wellness. Another resolution tonight addresses the sublease of our board office at 371 Franklin Avenue. Over the next several weeks, the district's administrative offices, including the business office and special services, will be relocating to 777 Bloomfield Ave. This move will help consolidate operations into a modernized space that better meets our needs. As in the case in many school districts with older facilities, we continue to face challenges with heating and cooling systems. While our staff has worked quickly to identify and address issues as they arise, some repairs require specialized parts and contractors. I have asked the business office to prepare a long-term plan to address outdated systems that will require significantly budgetary investment in the future. While mentioning the business office, I would also like to take a moment to recognize the hard work of our business office staff, led by Business Administrator Michael DeVita. Their ongoing efforts have already improved financial processes across the district, and we have begun early planning for the 26-27 budget. These conversations are often difficult but necessary, and I am grateful for their leadership and partnership. I would also like to thank Ms. Makis, who is not with us tonight, our state monitor. Her experience and oversight makes me confident that the district is moving forward in a sustainable manner. I appreciate learning from you, Jeanette. Looking ahead, we remain on track with preparations for the sixth grade move to John H. Walker Middle School in September 2025, 2026. Earlier today, we held the pre-construction meeting for the media center renovation, which will begin next month. This project is expected to be completed by April. And we're also planning for HVAC and classroom upgrades on the lower floor of the middle school. As these projects advance, I will continue to update the board and the community on facilities, operations, curriculum, and staffing with a more formal presentation coming over the next several months. The district is also preparing for changes to statewide testing. The New Jersey Department of Education has signaled that beginning this year, the NJSLA will shift to an adaptive model, more similar to the iReady platform we currently use. In late October or early November, districts will be required to administer a field test. While we await more details from the state, our district has already begun planning to meet state expectations and to use this experience as a learning opportunity. In partnership with the Nutley Educational Foundation, we will soon open registration for this year's TRAPS program, an entrepreneurship experience for students in which they design and launch small business ideas. The program culminates in a marketplace event on November 21st, where students present and sell their creations. This program is a powerful way to teach innovation, problem-solving, and financial literacy in a real-world setting, and we are grateful to the foundation for supporting it once again. Thank you, Chris Osage. Finally, a few important reminders about the calendar. The district will be closed this Thursday in observance of Yom Kippur, one of the most significant and solemn days on the Jewish calendar. This day of reflection and atonement is a time when many in our community come together with family and their faith traditions. I also ask all district faculty to be aware and participate in the no homework days as outlined by the board. On October 10th, we will hold a single-session day to allow time for professional development. And on October 13th, the district will be closed in observance of Columbus Day. As we move forward this fall, I am encouraged by the steady momentum in our classrooms, on our fields, and in our auditoriums all across the community. The Nutley Public Schools are continuing to take deliberate steps forward, aligning our efforts with the needs of our students and the expectations of our community. The progress we have made provides a solid foundation and clear direction as we continue our work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bania. Mr. DeVita, our Business Administrator's report?
Thank you. Back in January and February of this calendar year, the board approved a couple of resolutions to refund outstanding bonds that were dated in April of 2015. The bonds were originally issued in 2007 at a price of $38.5 million. At the time, estimates of savings were projected to be around $75,000 per year and $600,000 over the remaining life of the bonds. Because the refunding can only occur if we meet a minimum of 3% present value savings, we were not able to officially refund the bonds until this month, when rates for bonds improved. On September 11th, 2025, we entered the public market offering the bond refunding, and we were able to produce a present value savings of 4.696%. So I'm happy to report that the average annual savings will now be $113,480 per year over the life of the remaining bonds, and that amounts to a savings of $907,840 total over that timeframe. And the savings will go directly to the taxpayers through our debt service fund. I would like to thank our professionals for their assistance throughout this process and their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVita. Just to clarify, a last point is that the savings is going to go directly to the taxpayers in the form of a return on what was the original investment. But this is not something that's going to be in the budget for each, each year, correct?
Yes, correct. Yeah, that, that means that the $113,000 average savings, the debt service tax load will be decreased by that amount.
Thank you. With us tonight, we have our student representative, Matthew Lee. He's going to give us the student report. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. Our school year started off strong, with our first event being the same week as the first day of school. We kicked things off with our senior sunrise for our senior class. That same, that same day, we had our first football home season opener, and it was a great win for us. A week later, we started with Start With Hello Week, and we had a theme for each day to make all students feel welcome and included. We kicked things off that week with a theme of simply saying hello to someone new, and we had a school-wide mental health assembly and a club fair later that week. We also had our back-to-school night, and, and we're currently in the midst of our Homecoming Spirit Week. And for all the students listening, make sure to wear neon for tomorrow's theme. And looking ahead, we have a bunch of exciting events. Our Raider Day pep rally is happening this Friday. For parents, don't forget to sign up for the PTO. The first meeting will take place on October 15th. We'll have our week of respect next week. And NJGPA testing for the seniors will also take place that week. Lastly, for seniors, don't miss the college application presentation on October 7th. And remember the college admission panel on October 16th. That's all for now, and we're looking forward to a great year.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. You're welcome to stay with us, but if you have to go home and do, do work for tomorrow, you're, you can, you can leave anytime you'd like. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our committee reports. Uh, Ms. Dancheck-Martin, academic.
Thank you, Mr. President. The academic committee met on September 16th. In attendance were myself, Ms. Quirk, Mr. Gilberti, Mr. Bania, Ms. Locan Solo and Ms. Covielo. Ms. Covielo, the district math supervisor, joined the committee to provide a synopsis from her perspective regarding the math program and answered questions for the committee. The committee discussed the 2024-25 end-of-year superintendent report, the upcoming assemblies at Nutley High School on suicide awareness and online social media dangers, the shared service agreement with Nutley Family Service for District Crisis Counselor, lunchroom procedures across the district, curriculum that has been updated and is on this agenda for approval. We also discussed ongoing student matters, received an update to the sixth grade transitions facility plan, reviewed field trips and professional development, and received an update on personnel and legal matters. The next meeting of the academic committee is scheduled for Tuesday, October 14th at 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dancheck-Martin. Mr. Basamo, administration? Oh, Charlie, you have that one. You have it? He tried to get you to do it, Charlie.
Sorry, I wasn't ready for that. Uh, the administrative committee met September 16th in the board conference room. It was myself, uh, Mr. Kazinsky, uh, Mr. Scotty, Mr. Bania, Mr. DeVita. Uh, the committee discussed the 2024-25 end of, end-of-year superintendent report. The committee discussed the upcoming assemblies at Nutley High School on suicide awareness and online social media dangers. The committee discussed the shared service agreement with the Nutley Family Services for a district crisis counselor. We also discussed the self-assessment scores for the 2024-25 school year pertaining to the anti-bullying bill of rights. The committee received an update on the sixth grade transition, uh, facilities plan. Uh, we also discussed ongoing student matters as well as an update on personnel and legal matters. The next meeting, uh, the administrative committee is scheduled to, for Tuesday, October 14th at 4:30.
Thank you, Mr. Basamo. Mr. Fraginels, finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the finance committee met on September 17th. In attendance was myself, President Ferraro, Vice President Delandalea, Jeanette Makis, Superintendent Camp Bania, Michael DeVita, Teresa Laurie and Michael Perigi. The finance committee received a monthly insurance update from our insurance broker, IMAC. We discussed the savings with the, the refunding of the bonds, discussed sublease for the board offices, discussed the audit for the 2024-2025 year, and we reviewed a personnel update. We also received updates on facilities projects, including the middle school media center, moving media center furniture, the middle school classroom conversion, digital signs at the high school and middle school, the IT chiller, the high school media center HVAC, spring garden boiler room repair and PSCNG's incentive program. We reviewed, we reviewed resolutions including the removal of vehicles, donations, Yanacaw sign, nursing agreement and tuition for district employees attending schools. Thank you, Mr. President, and our next board meeting will be scheduled for October 15th.
Thank you, Mr. Fraginels. We now come to that portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on reports, resolutions and all school-related matters. Our board regulations number 0167 allot 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask that you try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once only after all, all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. Does anyone have any questions? I thought you had a question, Tim. You were going up like, yeah. All right, does, does anyone have any questions? Okay, see? Do you have a question? You can, you could get up.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Dana Simons. I live at 143 Brookfield Avenue in Nutley. I'm the mother of three daughters attending school at Nutley. My child is in fourth grade at Washington School. This is not our homeschool, but she was asked to attend Washington School to be part of a small group emotional regulation impairment class. This program has had its ups and downs. Her first year there, the classroom teacher resigned early in the year, and the class was taught by subs and paraprofessionals. In the time since, my child has adjusted well to Washington School. She has slowly but successfully transitioned into a regular education class for everything but math. She and I are both thankful that she can have math in the small group classroom as it affords her more flexibility and support. Her teachers and parents, both regular education and special education, have been kind, patient and helpful. This is not a criticism of them. I'm truly appreciative of the hard work that they do and the positive energy that they bring to the classroom. This year, this ERI class at Washington School has had a rocky start. In August, when students received their schedules, my child had a schedule that was two pages long, included multiple grade levels of every subject and had no teacher's name. My child was confused and disappointed. It put a damper on her back-to-school excitement. After reaching out to the principal, I was made aware that there was no permanent teacher for the ERI classroom yet, but that one would be starting in about two weeks. A month later, and there still is no permanent teacher. There have been two different teachers from the district in the classroom, but the current one needs to return to her regular position soon, so I'm anticipating a cycle of teachers subbing in this room. From what I understand, this position was posted back in May, yet here we are a month into the school year, and the students still don't have the stability that they need. Once again, this vulnerable group has fallen through the cracks. I'm here to ask tonight, why has hiring a teacher for this classroom not been treated as a priority? And what steps will be taken to ensure these students receive the stability and support that they deserve? Why was the teacher in that classroom last year moved to a different position and this class left without a teacher? At what point does the ERI class at Washington School cease to exist? If it doesn't have a teacher, then don't pretend that this program is a priority. Thank you.
Mr. Bania?
I, I'll answer your question. First of all, thank you so much. And I know we spoke on the phone, uh, quite some time ago, very similar conversation. Um, I, I'm here to tell you that this is the number one priority for me. I check in on this daily. I was at Washington School today. Um, I know we have interviews set up for tomorrow. You are correct, we've had this posting open since May, um, with no applicants to interview, or the ones we've interviewed were not viable through that process. We have gone to two providers to help get a teacher in this role. Uh, both of, both providers are struggling to find someone to provide for us for this role. Uh, we are hopeful that we will, um, find someone appropriate and, and, um, deserving for this position very shortly. Um, I do want to say that I, the fact that your children are transitioning to Gen Ed at Washington School, fourth grade, um, is great. And I do believe that we will find someone shortly to fill this role and to make this class what you're looking for. Um, I want to apologize for the inconsistency in teacher. Um, I can't speak to the personnel matters of the other teacher, but I can let you know that this is the district's number one priority. This and the HVAC issues we're experiencing around the district. I check in on these things daily, and I will continue to do so until we have a solution in place.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion to, uh, end the public comment portion?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Dancheck-Martin, would you take academic resolutions?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move academic resolutions one through five as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Basamo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Yes.
Dr. Delia.
Yes.
Mr. Fraginels. Mr. Gilberti. Mr. Kazinsky.
Yeah, I'm going to vote, um, on one. Abstain on two. Yes, on three, four and five.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty. Mr. Ferraro.
Yes. Mr. Kazinsky. Administration.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move administration resolutions one and two.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Basamo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Yes.
Dr. Delia.
Yes.
Mr. Fraginels.
Yes.
Mr. Gilberti. Ms. Kazinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes. Mr. Fraginels, finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move resolutions one through 17 as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Basamo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Yes.
Dr. Delia.
Yes.
Mr. Fraginels. Mr. Gilberti.
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes. Mr. Scotty, policy? Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Basamo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Yes.
Dr. Delia.
Yes.
Mr. Fraginels.
Yes.
Mr. Gilberti.
Yes.
Mr. Kazinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Yes. Mrs. Quirk, personnel?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move personnel resolutions one as written.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Basamo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Yes.
Dr. Delia.
Yes.
Mr. Fraginels. Mr. Gilberti.
Yes.
Ms. Kazinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Quirk.
Yes.
Mr. Scotty.
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro.
Abstain? Is there any old business to come before the board? Is there any new business to come before the board? Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10, call it four dash 12. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education rests to close executive session at this time to discuss personnel, contracts and legal issues. Be it further resolved that the results of the discussions will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of the subsequent meeting of the Board of Education, or when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist. Can I get a motion to adjourn to executive? Okay, thank you, everyone.